Good evening. My name is Jerry Cochran and I'd like to call the City of Pasco Planning Commission meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone in attendance this evening and ask everyone to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Nice to see everybody tonight and thank you, Commission members, for, it's nice to see everybody in person. It's awesome. I'd like to begin tonight's meeting and ask that the clerk call the roll.
Rosa Torres. Present. Mitchell Moffett.
Present.
Paul Mendez, excused. Kim Lerman.
Present.
Abel Campos.
Present.
Dana Crutchfield.
Present.
Rachel Teal, excused. Jay Handler.
Present.
Jerry Cochran.
Present.
Mr. Chair, there are seven members present. We do have a quorum.
Excellent. Thank you. The Planning Commission is an advisory board made up of volunteers appointed by the City Council. The purpose of the Planning Commission is to provide recommendations to the City Council regarding changes to the city's comprehensive plan, land use updates, block grant allocations, and zoning code. The Planning Commission is tasked with considering the long-term growth and the development of the community, the impact of land use decisions on the community, livability, economic opportunity, housing affordability, public services, and the environment. I'd like to remind the audience that tonight's proceedings are being broadcast live on the City of Pasco's Facebook page and on Spectrum Charter Cable, PSC Channel 191, and will be rebroadcast several times during the next month. This meeting is also being recorded so you can watch a video of it on the City of Pasco's website, which is pasco-wa.gov. You click on the video on demand link and you make your selection of which meeting you want to watch there. There are copies of the meeting agenda available on the back table so you can follow along if you're here in the room. And at this time, I'd like to ask everyone to silence your cellphones to prevent any interruptions during the meeting. For those present this evening, when you're given the opportunity and would like to address the Commission, please come forward to the podium and speak clearly into the microphone and state your name and just the city of address for our records. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I need to remind the audience and the Planning Commission that Washington state law requires public meetings like the one being held this evening, not only to be fair but also to appear to be fair. In addition, Washington state law prohibits the Planning Commission members from participating in discussions or decisions in which the member may have a direct interest or may be either benefited or harmed by the Planning Commission's decision. Any objection to a Planning Commission member hearing any matter on tonight's agenda needs to be aired at this time or it will be waived. First, are there any Planning Commission members who have a declaration at this time regarding any of the items on the agenda? Let the record show, there were no declarations. And second, is there anyone in the audience this evening that would object to any of the Planning Commission members hearing any of the items on the agenda? Let the record show that there were also no declarations. We, as the Planning Commission, we need and value your input. It helps us to understand the issues more clearly and to help us make better decisions and recommendations to the City Council. Furthermore, in many cases, your input here at this Planning Commission meeting is your opportunity, your only opportunity to get the facts and opinions placed onto the official record of the City Council that they will use to make their decision. I encourage you to take full advantage of the opportunity. The first item on the agenda tonight is the approval of the meeting minutes, which is from Thursday, March 16th, 2023. The meeting minutes were mailed out to the commissioners ahead of time and I trust everyone had a chance to look through those. And I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes or if there's any discussion.
This is Commissioner Lerman. I move to approve the March 16th, 2023, City of Pasco Planning Commission minutes, excuse me.
Second to me.
All right. It's been moved by Commissioner Lerman and seconded by Commissioner Moffett. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So let the record show that the meeting minutes were unanimously approved. And on the agenda tonight, we have no unfinished business, so we will move right to a public hearing item. The first item on the public hearing, which I had my agenda in front of me, is a shoreline master plan periodic update.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. The purpose of this public hearing this evening is to provide the Commission with an early review of updates currently being proposed for inclusion in the periodic update of the shoreline master program update. The city has been working with our team at White Plus Consulting and I'd like to introduce them to help us with this evening's presentation for you. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you and good evening. Good to be with you again.
Thank you and good evening. It's good to be with you. So I've been before the Planning Commission in the past and provided an overview of the shoreline master program and then more specific edits that we're proposing as far as changes. Tonight, we're just going to review some of that information. So I'll just advance the slide. We're going to talk about the Shoreline Management Act, the Shoreline Master Program, what the amendments are, process and schedule that we followed, as well as next steps. So the Shoreline Management Act is the state law that governs master programs. And there's also an administrative code prepared by Washington State Department of Ecology. Those two documents are those two, the law and the regulation, are what the city complies with as you update your shoreline master program. Shoreline jurisdiction really only covers that area that's in yellow. So it's at 200 feet from the shore, upland. If the shoreline area intersects a wetland, which there's a large Corps of Engineers wetland to the west part of the city, then the shoreline jurisdiction extends out to the edge of that wetland and is also included in shoreline jurisdiction. So we're looking at the Columbia and the Snake River as the water bodies and then that 200 feet area along the shoreline is shoreline jurisdiction. Floodways and associated floodplain areas are also included in the shoreline master program jurisdiction area. So the key principles of the shoreline master program is to balance environmental protection, public access, with water-oriented uses. And you have all three of those, obviously, at play in your shoreline master program. You have the water-oriented uses, like in the Port of Pasco, Big Pasco industrial area, as well as in the park facilities. You have public access all along the shoreline. And then environmental protection, where we try to protect the functions and values of the shoreline area, both the aquatic as well as the upland environment. So in your shoreline master program, there are goals and policies and you can see the different topics that are addressed. These are just a few examples. We also have environment designations that specify the types of uses that occur in shorelines, as well as regulations for general development, a use-specific development, like a boat launch or a boat ramp, and then modification regulations, if you're going to modify a trail or another feature in shoreline, how that activity would occur and still comply with the shoreline master program. The shoreline master program also includes critical area regulations, so wetlands, critical for recharge areas, steep slopes, soils. Those resources are also protected through the shoreline master program. And then there's also different ways the program is enforced as well, and other administrative provisions in the shoreline master program. So the shoreline master program was last updated in 2015. I was the project manager on that effort as well. We've conducted a lot of local and agency outreach as part of this process. We've worked very closely with Washington State Department of Ecology and I don't know if Heather is on from Washington State Department of Ecology, if she's on. But so Heather has been working with us on this, along with Jeremy Sykes. And so many of the changes that we've been sharing with you, we've also been discussing with Department of Ecology because they also have to approve this program along with the city. And I might just note that tonight is a joint hearing with Ecology and the city. Again, serves both of your needs. We also worked with staff to issue a notice to State Department of Commerce for all of the agencies in the state to review. And that 60-day review period is coming to enclose. It will end on April 25th. And we're hoping for adoption on or around or by June 30th of 2023. There is a step, once, if the Planning Commission approves recommendation to council for approval of the shoreline master program, the next step will be to take all of the administrative record. So the shoreline master program with the red line changes, the checklist that identifies all the different things that we're proposing to change, public comments, and we provide that information to Ecology and ask them to make an initial determination if we're in compliance with the state laws and regulations. And then they get back to the city and then if we get a positive response back that the shoreline master program is in compliance, then we can proceed with the approval process locally. So this identifies kind of how we came up with the amendments. We have a checklist that Ecology has provided for us and we use that. That's different laws and regulations that have changed since the 2015 adopted shoreline master program. We also considered local planning needs and made some minor changes for consistency and clarity, kind of cleaning up a few of the things that would make it read more clearly. This is just really kind of covers that same information that was in the previous slide. So here are the revisions, just for reference. We included a reference to a state law that basically exempts fish passage improvement projects from going through the permitting process. Their whole purpose is to improve the environment, so by definition, don't necessarily need to have a shoreline permit. They have requirements that they have to address as part of that process that is also protective of the shoreline environment. We updated the dollar values for development and for docks using the latest State Office of Financial Management, and that's indexed. So as costs go up in the Consumer Price Index, index to Seattle, then the State Office of Financial Management will issue revisions and that will automatically be reflected in your code as those dollar values go up. And those are important. Those dollar values are important because if you're below those thresholds, you don't have to comply, you don't have to apply for a substantial development permit. Clarified that only removing structures, if that's all that's happening on the property, that is not considered development. And then added in several exceptions for remediation, boatyard improvements, State Department of Transportation projects, as exceptions are exempt from the permitting process. And then added a new section and some definitions for non-conforming lots. So tonight is the hearing. Public comment will be received through the 25th. We'll prepare a comment response summary. We'll request that initial determination from Ecology. We'll hope to hear a positive thumbs up from Ecology that the changes are consistent with state law and regulations. And then we hope to be able to go through the city adoption process where the council takes action. The final shoreline master program will go to Ecology after that. There will be an appeal period. And then after the appeal period, if there is an appeal, then the shoreline master program will be considered approved and final for the city. One of the things that we're looking at is preparing a user guide. This will actually be into the future, but there's an opportunity for grant funding to prepare a shoreline master program user guide, which basically takes, you know, the shoreline master program's like 150 pages. It's quite a lengthy document to wade through. And this user guide will take the main key elements, so like maybe the buffers, vegetation management standards, some frequently asked questions, and pictures and glossy, or just easy to read, more like a detailed pamphlet, you know, maybe 20 or 30 pages that'll have the key provisions in there and something that can be used at the desktop, you know, when people come in for application. It's an easy reference for staff to use in communications. And we can also make it a web-based user guide so that people can go online and access that information as well and get lots of information, kind of the main information out of that 150 pages in like 20 or 30 pages. And with that, that's the end of my presentation. Excellent. Thank you. Questions for, on the shoreline master plan, from the Commission members?
So, let me understand this, right? So you come to us basically in the future, right, to get our recommendation? Then it goes to, then you take that and give it to the Department of Ecology, right? And then you bring back the red line. Is that right?
So...
Why doesn't the red line start at the beginning of that?
You have the red lines before you tonight and they're the red lines that we've reviewed with you. I hope that you'll take action tonight to make a recommendation to Ecology. And then after, if you do take that action, then we send a whole packet to the state for an initial determination. It's like an informal, like, okay, the Planning Commission has recommended that the council approve these changes. Ecology, will you tell us before we take it to council if there's any issue that we might have missed? So if they flag something that's either deficient or they make a recommend change, then we may come back to the Planning Commission.
I understand. That was my question. And after they get it, it could come back to us instead of going to council and kind of...
That's correct.
You know, could create a beehive effect, so to speak.
Yeah. But the changes are so minor and straightforward and we've already reviewed them with Ecology a couple different times and they haven't, you know, said that we're deficient at this point. So I'm, you know, maybe 95% confident that they're going to come back with a thumbs up, that everything's good to go, and then we can go right to the adoption process with the council. Thank you. And Jacob, can you clarify? I don't think we're going to make a decision or recommendation tonight. Is that going to carry over?
Yeah, I might have misspoke. And I'll defer to our consultant team and maybe Heather Bush online about the proposed, if, the proposed action this evening, if any.
I would hope that you're ready to make, take action on a recommendation. If you're not, I'd like to know if there are any specific questions you might have. So we're hopeful of that. We can come back again, obviously, if we need to. But I think you have the information before you if you're ready to make a decision. You know, we didn't get the red lines, I don't think, tonight. We, I think we got some proposed stuff earlier in the process, but we do not have the red lines in front of us tonight. So I think it probably would be inappropriate to ask for a decision. I know you would like to see that. Yeah, no, I know. So I apologize that we can't, probably be better if we continue the public hearing to next week in the month. Good on that, staff? All right. Okay. Any other questions for...
This is Commissioner Lerman. I have a question about, on the red lines, is the ask to not be ADA compliant, is that still an ask?
It's actually, so the ADA compliance is actually, it just doesn't require a permit. So if you have, you know, a facility that's in shoreline jurisdiction that doesn't have ADA compliance to it, and you're proposing some changes to make it ADA compliant, those don't require a permit through this process. The city can proceed just through whatever their typical, you know, building permit process is for making those changes. You don't need the shoreline permit. So it's actually supporting and making it easier to provide ADA facilities.
Thank you.
About the Department of Ecology and the Corps of Engineers, how, because I know that they're very protective of the shoreline or involved in the shoreline and have been for decades. So how are they factoring in here with the Department of Ecology?
Yeah, that's a great question. So this is a state-local program regulation. We factored in the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers in terms of ownership. And there's also, you'll notice a provision in the red line strikeouts when you receive those, that we clarified that federal activity on federal land is outside of shoreline jurisdiction.
Okay.
So anything that the Corps does to, you know, deal with the levees or pump stations, you know, any of their facilities, even activities they might do in their wetland facility on the west end of the city, kind of on the bend of the river as it heads to the north, that's all outside of shoreline jurisdiction.
Okay.
We did work with the Corps of Engineers. We inventoried their facilities. You know, our setbacks kind of take into account where the levees start and stop and, because they provide kind of a functional break, right? You have the shoreline area where, well, in the picture, you can see right there by Osprey Point, you know, you have more of a typical repair. And granted, it's park-like in that setting, but you don't have the levee, the riprap, all of that. So where the protected areas are, we have less function, therefore the buffers are narrow in those areas because there's less to protect.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions or feedback?
In, I kind of follow on to the Army Corps question. Does the Army Corps' boundaries typically line up with what is in here with the 200 feet, or is it typically different?
It varies.
It varies, yeah. So there's no good answer to that.
There's no good answer to that.
That's what I, that's what I was thinking probably was the answer, but...
Yeah. So like the wetland area that is all Corps of Engineers ownership on the west side of the town, the city, they have, that area bumps out, I don't know, 400 or 500 feet upland because of that, you know, inundated area. So that's where the shoreline jurisdiction bumps out, picks in, that goes to the perimeter of that wetland, and then drops back to 200 feet. And then in other areas, you know, the levee will take up most of it. And then in other areas, there's hardly any Corps ownership.
And then my last question, can you remind us on the definition of the non-conforming lots and how that works?
Yeah. So the, it's legal non-conforming, right? So when the lot was established or the use was established, it was legal at that time. Now that we've updated the program to comply with this latest state law and requirements, regulations, then it may not be in compliance today. Basically, it continues as a legal non-conforming use. If someone wants to change the use or the, you know, if there's a structure in place and they want to change that structure, the shoreline master program basically just says you can't increase the extent of non-conformity. So you still have to comply with the provisions, but they continue on. And nothing changes if there's no use change or no change to a structure.
Gotcha. So it's just another way of saying grandfathered unless you change.
Exactly. Grandfathered unless, and even you can change.
And sometimes if you don't increase.
Yeah. But you just can't like build closer to the shoreline. You know, you'd have to build on the backside so that it was, and comply. And you could still make changes, but you may have to mitigate on another part of your property for offsetting the impacts.
Great. Any last questions from the commissioners before we open the public hearing for any comments or questions?
Just one quick question, Ms. Commissioner Torres. Are there any consequences or like, what are the ramifications if we don't meet that June 30th deadline?
There's no, there's no legal ramifications or anything. The grant funding runs out, but we will work with the city to make sure, you know, if we have to provide some support beyond that date, we're happy to do that. Excellent. Well, we'll go ahead and, at this time, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And any individuals here who wish to speak on this particular item, now's the time to come forward and speak. Please state your name and city of address for the record or online for that matter. Awesome. Thank you. Go ahead and come forward, please. And your city, just a city of address, not, you don't have to give us the full address.
Oh, okay. I don't mind though. My name is Cynthia Muse. Live in the county, 65 years. But I also am joint owner of my father's estate at 106 West Gorts Street in Pasco. And so, yes, we are city residents, or city household owners in Pasco. I'm here because we love the shoreline. And my father's legacy is going to include anything that we can do for more public access to the shoreline. And I think, not to this council, but to the city council, I had brought once before, all the master shoreline plans for the County of Franklin, River Shore linkage, amenity plan, McNary shoreline plan, Tri-City River Shore master plan, and then the shoreline City of Pasco master plan. And so, you know, this is, this is beautiful material and it all coordinates and, you know, is unified in its efforts to do great things for the shoreline. And so my question is, why are these not being followed after all these years? Some of the aspects of this that some of us that are just ordinary lay citizens see, the glaring difficulties of not following some of this as we interpret it. And one of them is, of course, the public access issue. And we saw that, first of all, I became involved with 2901-260 Public Access when the Franklin County Irrigation District was being developed for residential lots from an old historic place that was so much enjoyed for open space. And so that's, that's where we first started to make a lot of noise and formed a group to, to work against this kind of thing ever happening again. And then it addresses public access again, right up river here. We're going to probably be facing that where it's 2901-420 at number eight. New multi-unit residential developments in subdivision lands into five or more lots shall make adequate provisions for public access consistent with regulations. Okay, you've got that Columbia Point development, I think that's what it's called, the old Harris Farm. Yeah, thank you. And where is the public access visually and physically for that? Now, I know the shoreline resident people don't want that, but to try to get past all their docks and everything, I don't think it's going to be much of an issue. Most of us in kayaks found that out, have to swerve way out around all those docks. But anyway, the, the public access is such an important element of living in a community that's based on a river that runs through it is the crown jewel of all of eastern Washington. And so, so it's a matter of interpretation as to how these are interpreted, how they're used or abused. And so, you know, we as public citizens are going to keep watchdogging this stuff, but we're not lawyers. Well, some of us are, in our group, are not lawyers, but we are going to keep at this. And hopefully you'll agree with us that public access is critical and that we have to ensure that it happens at all costs for visual and physical access to the river and river shores and that they're kept public as much as possible and not developed. Thank you.
Thank you for your feedback. We appreciate your comments and we will enter those into the records. I don't know if there are any questions for the response from commissioners or if staff has any comments. I know it's a fairly convoluted issue because it's not just the shoreline master plan. Army Corps comes into play, property ownership comes into play. So it's a really complicated story. So, but we appreciate you going on record with your feedback and comments. So are there any questions?
Are there any questions for? Okay, uh, someone else? Welcome.
Oh, I'll, I'll just speak. Everybody knows I have a loud and obnoxious voice.
All right, we can hear you.
So I'm Pete Riggy. I live at ninety-one oh-four West Pooter Street, Yellow House with wheelchair ramp, uh, just for more detail and you need. By the way, that area is called the Bridgeland Bend on the west side of Pasco in Broadmoor area. And secondly, uh, before the public comment period is over, I think it would be really inappropriate for you guys to take action tonight. So I'm glad you decided not to do so. Uh, I submitted my comments. Uh, you should probably all get a copy of those at some point, I submitted them to Jacob and to Jeremy Sines. Uh, and I won't go through those in any great detail, but I must say, I had an enormous amount of fun reading through the shoreline master plan, uh, program, and, uh, it was very educational, and, uh, I think there are a lot of things where the way that we practice it is, uh, needs to be changed as much as the wording in the document. So really, uh, you know, you can read my comments here. I have them all numbered according to, uh, the numbering in the document, which, uh, seems a little strange, uh, because the actual Pasco municipal code that's numbered in the document doesn't actually match the Pasco municipal code that's on the website. And so, uh, there are still some, some, uh, editorial things that need to go in there, or perhaps I don't understand how that process works in its specifics. But let me only comment on one particular item here, and, uh, I forgot my glasses tonight, so I'm gonna have to kind of hold this a long way out in front of me here, but, uh, section twenty-nine oh-one seven-seven-zero, uh, D-one-B. There's a new addition to the shoreline master plan that says, gives an exclusion for, uh, development for eleven thousand two hundred dollars for all other docks constructed in fresh waters. This is very, very general. Uh, it seems like a, uh, amendment that could be abused in the future if that number gets up. From my perspective, anything that is built on or over the water should require a special development permit. Uh, so that's the only thing in the shoreline management plan that really caught my eye and said, wait, this is something we really need to, to consider very, very seriously. It looks a little fishy from my standpoint, frankly, but, uh, maybe I don't really understand what the purpose of that is, and maybe Jacob can be, uh, or, uh, these guys can be, can inform me on what meaning that that is. If I'm unclear about it, other readers will be unclear about it. So that section needs to be reconsidered and clarified as to exactly what that eleven thousand two hundred dollars stand, stands for. But from my interpretation, it means you can build a structure that goes under that cost, and nobody has to consider it. So I don't think that's what you meant. So, anyway, if you want the details, you can look through the document. But anyhow, I must say, thank you for the time tonight, and, uh, I did, uh, I did enjoy, uh, actually doing this kind of stuff. So I did have a great deal of fun reading the shoreline master program, and, uh, I'll be back.
Great. Well, thank you for your feed. Yeah, any questions? And we appreciate your feedback and going on record with your input.
You guys, thank you.
And I know, I do know that, uh, you know, there's, there's, there are a lot of things in our consideration, and it's a complicated thing. The other thing is, I think that the point was made that we are working on, hopefully, a user guide that will make this a lot easier to read than the hundred-and-ninety-page document as well. So I think that'll benefit a lot of folks to be able to have this user guide that makes a lot of things more clear, so I'm excited to hear. That was one of my questions, is what, what does citizens do for documentation, right? And so when you brought up the user guide, I was excited to hear that you're doing a user guide, so. All right. Any other comments or questions, uh, on this issue? Um, anyone else would like to speak on this item tonight from a public hearing perspective, or anyone on the phone?
Ms. Bush, did you care to, uh, speak this evening? It, it seems you're self-muted if you do.
Um, I, I didn't have anything else really to, to bring. I think, um, a number of the Planning Commission questions, could be answered by, there's a, a periodic review checklist guidance, um, a couple different versions, but a twenty-twenty-one version that has all of those checklist items, um, and could provide some more in-depth answers. But, uh, other than that, uh, nothing, nothing else to add at this moment.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, one last call. Anyone else would like to speak on this item in the public hearing before we close it? Okay, with that, we will close the public hearing, and I think the next step is next month we'll be back with the red lines, and, uh, the public comments will have closed, and you'll probably include some key public comments for us to brief us on as well. And then we can do that recommendation that you, uh, want to do for city council. So thank you for being here tonight, too. All right, that is our only public hearing item, and we have no workshop items, so we will move to the last item uh, in our other business, which is the National League of Cities twenty-twenty-three Mayors Institute. So I will turn that over to staff for comment on that.
Good evening again, uh, members of the Planning Commission. Wanted to give the Planning Commission, um, uh, notice that the city of Pasco, um, in late twenty-twenty-two, um, applied for and was selected, uh, to participate in the twenty-twenty-three Cities of Opportunity Mayors Institute, which is hosted by the National League of Cities, a pretty, uh, well-known, um, organization across the country. Uh, the institute is a, uh, year-long cohort comprised of cities across the country, including their mayors and, uh, staff, selected through a competitive application. Um, the intent of this year's, twenty-twenty-three's, um, uh, effort is to, uh, improve, uh, neighborhood revitalization, uh, to improve health and equity, um, through the, uh, elements of, uh, zoning, uh, infra, built environment and infrastructure and, uh, public health. So we are, uh, in the very early stages of working with our own cohort here at the city of Pasco, and working with, um, uh, staff with the Downtown Pasco Development Authority, and obviously under, uh, Mayor Brahas here at the city of Pasco to, uh, come up with some initiatives and projects and programs that, uh, we can look at to, um, uh, reengage, uh, and improve, uh, quality of life for members of here in the city of Pasco. As I mentioned, one of five communities, along with East Point, Georgia, that's a suburb of Atlanta, Mount Vernon, New York, Gresham, Oregon, not too far from us, um, ourselves, and Houston, Texas, which is kind of an outlier, and I think, uh, because of the whole city they got to, to participate. So, uh, staff will be working over the next, uh, twelve months, uh, with these cities and amongst ourselves, and we would like to just bring the Planning Commission along that journey with us, um, as we, uh, hopefully come up, um, uh, with some great, uh, community-oriented projects and programs that we can, um, implement and pilot here in, um, central and particularly downtown Pasco. So just wanted to provide the, uh, commission with that.
Thank you. Well, congratulations to staff, uh, on being selected. I know you guys put a work, a lot of work in those applications, and I guess we'll look forward to hearing, um, will you kind of give us, like, progress reports, uh, as you go along, in terms of what's going on with this initiative?
Yeah, uh, certainly. Uh, in, in fact, we, we've been working, um, over the last month or so on assessments that we submit to the National League of Cities, and while, um, I, I think we can say we've been able to participate fortunately with many larger, uh, programs and projects over the last several years. This one is, is quite, um, brain-intensive. It's, it, they're really making us work, so, um, that's good. It means that the end product will hopefully yield benefits for the community. So we're really excited about this, um, but they're certainly making us work, and I'm really excited about the staff, including Gina, who's working the electronics tonight, um, along with other staff in the CED department, um, working on this project.
Excellent. Any questions, uh, for Jacob on, uh, this initiative?
Uh, how long is the program? How long will you get to participate?
Uh, twelve months, so, uh, through the end, uh, actually through mid-two thousand twenty-four. Um, and, uh, we will be, uh, visiting Houston, Texas next month to, um, finalize our assessment, our project proposals, meeting with potential funders, um, and then coming back, uh, from that trip, trying to actually implement that. So we'll probably have an update to the Planning Commission in the summer.
And good idea to get to Houston before summer. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? All right. Well, I think that's, uh, the last official item on our agenda of, of other business, but I, I wanted to take a moment tonight to, um, this is Rick White's last, uh, Planning Commission meeting. Um, Rick is retiring, uh, and I'd like, wanted to just take an opportunity, you know, from my perspective, uh, as a chair, just to thank you for all the support you've been to us in the Plan, Planning Commission, and, and also just thank for you, the way you do your job. And, uh, you have a lot of masters to serve in this role, and you do it wonderfully, so. And I just wanted also allow the Planning Commission members to say any comments and feedback. Uh, it doesn't have to be a Rick roast, but, um, anything you want to share with Rick about feedback you have for him?
Commissioner Crutchfield, I'd like to jump in. I'm new on the commission, but I've known Rick White through my husband, Gary. And just wanted to congratulate you on your retirement, and let you know you don't need to grow a ponytail to be incognito. But truly, um, you've done a lot for the city, and I could mention a lot of different things, but you've certainly left a thumbprint on the city of Pasco, and, um, I wish you well in your retirement.
I'd like to echo the same thing. Um, just the five years that I've been here, it's been an amazing, um, journey, uh, with you. Your professionalism has always been top-notch, and I know that maybe we don't say it enough, we want to say thank you. Um, and you are really well-respected in our community, and I want you to know that there's, there's a lot of people that, that have either known you or heard about you, and you're really top-notch, and they respect you in that manner. So thank you so much. Not quite sure how we're going to fill your shoes, uh, but we'll try, and we'll miss you a lot. Thank you, Rick.
Yeah, Rick, um, it's been a pleasure working with you. Congratulations on your, uh, retirement. And, um, as I said to you earlier, um, keep doing stuff and, uh, have fun and, uh, travel, and, uh, keep setting those goals. But thank you very much for all of your support and all of the things you've done for the city of Pasco.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, Rick, congratulations, uh, Mam and I, Mam's my wife, uh, met you years ago, uh, a few years back through your wife, and it's been a pleasure, and I really didn't know you were here when I came, and, because I thought you'd already retired, already retired, because you told me you were going to way back when, and so I'm glad you finally got there. And, uh, i- it's been amazing watching you work the machine that exists here in Pasco, and it, and it just floors me, you know? You, you, your personality commands respect, and I respected you back then, and then when I saw you work here and the things that you do here, I was just at awe. You know, I did, I didn't give you the amount of respect that you should have because I didn't know, you know? But there, there is no amount, uh, enough respect that people can give you, and you just do an amazing, unbelievable job here. So, uh, thank you for what you've done in Pasco, and, uh, you've left a legacy here for sure, and I feel sorry for the person that follows you because there's no way they're gonna step in your shoes, so.
Well, thank you all very much. That's really an honor, and, uh, you know, I, when Jer, uh, when Mitch first came to the chambers, I could not figure out why this guy looked so familiar. And we had, had, I don't know, a summer dinner, maybe eight months before or something. I go, who's that guy? He just looks so familiar. But at any rate, I want to thank the commission, because, uh, and not just for the time you spend with the meetings, because that's, that's impressive enough. But, uh, people forget about all the preparation you do for the meetings. Uh, you get a packet, generally, the last couple packets have been a little light, uh, except for the block rent issue last month. But you, you get a packet that's like this every, almost every single month, and, uh, your trusted advisors of city council, you make, uh, recommendations on the, the place that eighty-two thousand people nowadays call home, and that, that is incredibly valuable, and, um, I, I appreciate all your effort and, and all your support.
I wanted to say something. It's Commissioner Laraman. Um, I appreciate your vision, that you have, uh, carried out for the city of Pasco and, um, residents, and even for my own children. I look forward to them, uh, living and, and growing in this community that, um, you've helped develop and help guide with your, your wisdom and your years of experience. And I also really look forward to my, uh, current students and future students to be able to call Pasco their home and be able to have that choice. And they have that choice when we have a good vision and a good plan to be able to house our future residents. And so, thank you from all my heart. I appreciate, and, um, congratulations on your retirement.
Again, thank you, and, uh, you know, when you have a staff like we do, it's, it makes a big difference, real big difference. And I did, also, I forgot to advance a slide, so I think Jacob has a, a couple of closing comments on our housing survey.
It was kind of weird to do this right after that, but, uh, Rick, you should probably fill this one out, too. Um, we are actively seeking public input on our Housing Action Plan Community Survey, so, um, usually we tell folks to put away their phones, but right now, if you're watching from home or somewhere, uh, you can pull out your phone and snap the QR code and, and please take our survey, and, um, uh, we'll be back with the Planning Commission, uh, probably in, uh, uh, June with the results of this survey. It'll be open through about early May or so, um, leading right into our housing stakeholder, our second housing stakeholder workshop. But, um, um, yeah, that felt kind of weird to do after that, but Rick, I, on behalf of others, obviously, thank you.
Is this link up also on the website?
This is also on our, on our city of Pasco website. It's on the front page, and if you, uh, Google or Bing Housing Action Plan, city of Pasco, this will come up, too.
Thank you very much. Well, to close out, you know, the city of Pasco did a survey, what do you want to the next planning director? And, you know, I went and filled it out, and I kind of felt like I just said, hire another Rick, right? So, Rick, um, I'd hope everybody would join me and just. All right, uh, with that, uh, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. The meeting is adjourned at seven fifteen PM. Thank you, everyone.